My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi everyone. Tonight, we're going to do things a little bit different. I'm going to suspend the public comment until the end of the meeting so that everyone in the audience can hear all the discussion and then we can have, we'll have, take public comments then. Hopefully, we'll be able to answer any questions or concerns. So, the first item on the agenda is a report of the Chair. I signed the PR 2206 for Julie O'Brien. Grants, gifts, and donations. We have a $38 donation to the Council on Aging from Ginny Nichols. Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a $4 donation to the Council on Aging from Alan and Mary Fith.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have a $16 donation to the Council on Aging from Janice Martel.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. We have a $40 donation to the Council on Aging from June Brogan.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we have an anonymous donation for $152 to the Council on Aging.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have no public hearings. Under new business, we have, Howie Traister has served on the, many years on the ZBA. His appointment was up in June and we had asked him to extend his, his appointment to the end of September to get his, a few things off the docket. Otherwise, we would have to re-list everything and he agreed, but he has now come off the Board. And I'd like to send a letter of thank you, thanking him for his many years of service.
Absolutely. Motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to just say that, you know, Howie has been the heart and soul of that Board for a very long time and he's done a terrific job and knew the history of the town and really understood a lot of things and I would like to thank him personally and I think he really deserves a, a nice letter.
Yeah, I think he served the town well.
Served the town terrifically.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a new associate member of the zoning Board of Appeals appointment. Her name is Michelle Wielder. Her letter of intent is in the, in our packet. That will round out the Board. It'll have, they'll have three members and two alternates. I want to take a motion.
Motion to appoint Michelle Wilder.
Second.
To the ZBA as an associate member.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Perhaps you could highlight a few of the things from her letter since she's certainly more than qualified.
Sure. So she, I had a phone conversation with her too. I personally thanked her for volunteering for time. She's a resident of the Town of Newbury, living at 175 Scotland Road. She's interested in volunteering. She is, was a practicing architect, licensed in Massachusetts for 18 years. She's had spent the majority of her career designing and constructing buildings. She designed projects for K through 12 schools and colleges and universities in New England. She recently moved to Newbury within the last year. She formerly lived in Ipswich. She loves Newbury as, she enjoys the value and beauty and uniqueness of each neighborhood. And she is also a Realtor in town, so she comes from unique experience and Newbury's very lucky that she volunteered. Can I entertain a, well, if that's discussion, how about any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The, one day liquor license for the Byfield Community Arts Center was pulled at the last minute. They're no longer going to have their function, so I'm going to entertain a motion to approve a one day liquor license for a wedding at Spencer Pierce Little Farm.
I'm going to recuse from this decision.
If you guys recuse.
Motion to approve a one day liquor license for a wedding at Spencer Pierce Little Farm.
Can I get a second?
Before you do, wouldn't a better procedure on the other one, since they withdrew it? Wouldn't it be better to just do a motion to withdraw so then the record is clear that we didn't forget to approve it?
Okay, okay, I'll come, I'll come back to that. So Spencer Pierce Little Farm, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So now we have a one day liquor license for the Byfield Community Arts Center. They have withdrawn their application.
Motion to approve the withdrawal.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jerry. We have an approval to request for public property use for the Gene Geiger Crisis Center. They want to hang a banner on the, on the upper green.
Motion to approve the request for a banner for the Crisis Center.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's just for, for their, their march and it's for the backstop, which would be the fence, just so the folks know what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, the back, is there a walk for domestic violence?
Okay, a one day walk.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we have to approve the 2020 re-presenting plan for the Town of Newbury. So, as you know, we went through a census and Town Clerk had sent us a note that the, our precincting did, sent, didn't change. So, everything is, the precinct lines remain the same as outlined on the attached map. We all have the map here. Interesting, there's more people in Byfield than there are in Newbury. But, so I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the 2020 precinct plan for Town of Newbury.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now under old business, we have the Larkin Road Bridge discussion. So, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the status of the Larkin Road culvert replacement and next steps and to address the issues raised by area residents as they relate to replacing the culvert and reopening Larkin Road. I'm going to give you a brief summary of how we're going to go through the evening so that everybody understands, I don't want to set expectations. We're going to, I'm going to give a first, a brief overview of the timeline and the history. We're going to hear from public safety concerns from Chief, the Police Chief John Lucy and the Fire Chief Doug Jammerin. We're going to go over the design of the culvert. There's going to be discussion on traffic mitigation. There's going to be some comments on legal documents that are required for the work to be done on this Larkin Road right of, right away. There's going to be an update from the developer's attorney. And at that point, after we hear everything, I will entertain public comment. And that's when we can hear any other concerns and if you have any, any other questions. And even if you go home and you think of something that you didn't think of, please email the Town and we'll try to get you a response. After all of that, we'll have a discussion as a Board and then we'll figure out what our next, next steps are. So, the Larkin Road culvert was initially damaged during the Mother's Day storm in May of 2006. The culvert failed on September 7th, 2014. The DPW blocked vehicular access to the culvert. Jersey barriers were installed and road closed signs were installed. The intention of the Town back then was to replace the culvert immediately. The Newbury DPW reached out to a local engineer and contractor for initial cost estimate for, to replace the culvert. The cost estimate at that time came in at $250,000 and there was no funding available for design and construction in the operating budget at that time. So due to anticipated length of time the culvert would be closed, the DPW installed a dead end sign beginning, at the beginning of Larkin Road to keep through traffic from going down Larkin Road because there was insufficient room, as you all know, for cars and trucks to turn around. In December 15th, Livingston, or Livingstone Development Corp., the developer, a developer of proposed residential development in Georgetown with access only from Larkin Road, appeared before the Select Board offering to replace the culvert. Replacement design was for pedestrian but in bicycle traffic only. The public safety officials advocated strongly for the culvert to be designed to accommodate vehicular traffic due to emergency response concerns. In March of 2016, the developer met again with the Select Board to present a new culvert plan designed for vehicular traffic. The culvert and railings were to be built to Mass DOT's specifications. The developer proposed to replace the culvert at his own cost. The Town was to pave it and the Select Board voted to approve. On August 31st, 2016, the Newbury Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions. In November of 2018, the Georgetown Planning Board granted an OSRD site plan approval for the proposed development. The approval includes conditions requiring that the culvert replacement be complete before the first occupancy permit was issued. In March of 2019, the Newbury Conservation Commission granted a three-year extension for the order of conditions. And on, in March 20, of 2021, the project was then sold to a new developer. And on March 6th, 2021, the pre-construction meeting was held on the site. So, that's the history behind why that road, the culvert, how the culvert failed and how, how the road has closed. And that brings us to where we are today. Significant time has passed. I think that the residents have brought up extremely valid concerns and I think that it's incumbent upon the Select Board to hear your concerns and to address them. So, the first up on my, on my list that I'd like to have address is our, is our Police Chief, John Lucy.
Okay, regarding this, this project, the concerns from a public safety perspective, which is what I'm here to solely provide you folks for consideration, is some testing that I did as far as response times, because that's my primary concern, is how quickly can we get emergency services to the populace on Larkin Road, specifically in the Georgetown side of this culvert? And the testing that I did is starting from the intersection of Larkin Road and Central Street, traveling down Larkin Road to the bridge was 110 seconds. To travel from that same starting point, Larkin Road at Central Street, the way we have to travel now because of the closing, it is 250 seconds. What that represents is 127% increase in response time. That is very, very unsettling and concerning to me as a, as a public safety official. I also took some considerations of, you know, if we had a medical response out to that area, that's, 127% increase in time is unacceptable. But there are also other conditions to be considered. Any kind of obstruction on Larkin Road between Central Street and the bridge in Georgetown beyond limits to, restricts egress and access to all points west of the obstruction. So in other words, if there's a tree down, if there's a wire down, if there's a fire incident where they're running five inch line across the, the road, if there's any obstruction that hinders exit or egress from Larkin onto Central Street, so to say, if there, in between that area, with that bridge closed, there's no egress. There's no, people are stuck in their, in their situation until that obstacle or that obstruction is cleared. That could take hours, it could take longer. And that's, you know, that's in a convenience level, which is, if I was a resident, that would be unacceptable. But as a more urgent public safety concern is if there's another incident where there's an obstruction and there's a medical concern or some other incident that develops between the obstruction and the bridge, we don't have a response because there's no other way to get there. So, the, the possibility, and I, and my world revolves around possibility and being prepared for, for these things, the what ifs are very, very important in my, in my world. The what ifs of something happening between Central Street and anywhere on Larkin Road, everything west of that obstacle now becomes inaccessible or non-egressible. So that's a concern. Up to this point, I mean, I have other, other things I can address if they come up down the line, but those, from, from a public safety perspective, those are my, my major concerns. I also know that the Fire, I've had conversations with the Fire Chief who's in the audience, I've had conversations with the Police Chief in Georgetown and the Fire Chief. We've, we've discussed this a lot and they feel very much like-minded on the issue. I know Fire Services, I don't want to go down, you know, outside my, my scope, but in, I'm sure the Chief Jammerin can expound, but I know Fire Services depend very, very much on accessibilities for mutual aid responses and such. So, and being able to run a line continuing from our side to their side and vice versa is very, very important in their services. Again, I don't want to go down someplace that's not my purview, but I know that this was a concern brought up through the Georgetown Fire Chief and Police Chief and myself, so there's a lot of reasons, public safety, it's, it's a ground ball, public safety perspective, that this needs to be opened.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, John.
I see Chief Jammerin is here? Hi Chief.
Good evening.
Thank, thank you for coming.
Good evening. I won't, I won't reiterate what Chief Lucy already said. I'm in full agreement with that. Time is, is essential for us and every second counts. So that, that saving time, the saving time would be huge for us. I'll say on the Fire Department aspects, when you have such a long dead end, the results is stacking of fire apparatus. So you lay a five inch hose across the line, across the road, up the road, everything gets stacked up. If we have another way in, we can have apparatus come the other way through. If they're stacked up one behind another, we ran into that on the island quite a bit, we can't get through. So if the first couple of pieces are fine, if we need an additional ladder truck or additional anything, we can get through over the hook, over the hose. I've had discussions with the Georgetown Fire Chief, the Acting Chief, he's in the same situation we're in. He's wanted open for mutual aid purposes, for just his response. He has come all the way around to our station. That's all a problem for them. Also, if we have to use another water system, there's Georgetown hydrants right on the other side of the bridge, or the culvert, which would be inaccessible to us if we, if this is closed. So that's, that's all we're having in the Fire Department.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So those are our two public safety officials.
Madam Chair, for me to apologize, Mike Laram, the engineer, just texted me, he's not getting any audio, he can't hear anything. I just wanted to share that in case anything could be done about it.
Okay. It's not on our side.
Looks like there's a mute on there.
That's, are we on mute, changing?
Looks like we're muted, bottom left corner. There you go.
I don't know.
Is Mr. Cooper in his office right there? Perhaps we can ask him.
It's also, I think, I think we may have fixed it.
Is he getting any now?
Is he's getting it now?
Yep.
Perfect.
We're good, thank you.
Just checking.
Okay, so, the approval of the previous culvert for this, on this, for this project was reviewed quite some time ago. So, I've asked that the head of our DPW, James Sarette, get a peer review of this culvert to ensure that it's built to the current specs, to make sure that it's safe. And there's other things that have to be done, so I've asked James to come here tonight. James, would you mind coming up and explaining?
Hey everyone. So, yeah, so the Town hired Bayside Engineering to review the plans. They took a look at the plans, they got them late just because between getting everything and they sent over a few concerns that they forwarded, we forwarded to the developer. And on top of that, it has to go to Mass DOT. And at the end of the day, even if everybody likes it, if they have an issue, you know, that's the final say. So we're still waiting to hear from Mass DOT, which I believe they've sent out and, you know, the responses to our concerns.
James, that's the DOT Stream Crossings Team, right?
Well, it's, they're more the structural.
Yeah, so they're going to do a good job on it.
Yeah, exactly.
They have high hurdles.
Yeah. We've used.
You indicate your concerns. What are your concerns?
There was just concerns with making sure that the railings were all Mass DOT crash tested and make sure they were long enough, you know, more than just the culvert that they extend out a little bit further so as you approach the culvert, you know, nobody can end up in the water as well.
So, again, what James did was he, we hired an outside third party reviewer and the, it was my hope that this would have been, you know, reviewed and responded to and everything by this date, but that didn't occur. So, again, nothing will happen with this road or this project.
Until.
Until what, James?
The Town's happy in Mass DOT.
Yeah, so, we're quite a little distance away from all of that.
Yeah, exactly, we still got.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, that being said, there's still concerns about the traffic, it's going to be increased traffic going up and down this road. I was hoping that our Town Planner, Martha, can come up and maybe discuss some traffic mitigation measures that she's even thought of, if any at all. You both can do it.
Well, yeah, I can, I can help. I've been talking quite a bit on this. Obviously, the first and foremost is an acceptable speed limit. Right now, the posting on, on Larkin Road, it's a, it's deemed a thickly settled, you know, so statutorily 30 mile an hour zone. There is a 20 mile an hour zone that, for a very sharp bend in the road, but, you know, that's just west of Millstone, but the road itself is 30. My recommendation, when it gets to that point, would be to repost it to a strictly 25 mile an hour zone. That'd be the first, most effective step.
Okay.
And, I mean, that's, obviously, what would go, come along with that would be enforcement from my department. And what we think is, this is, a lot of this might be speculatory, but the people that are going to be using that road are probably going to be using, they're going to be consistently using that road, you know, whoever does use it and by education, by having a presence out there and, you know, and getting the culture of enforcement, we think that that'll, you know, the example I love to use is, is Boxford Center. Everyone knows Boxford Center, you know, and there's a reason why they do that, you know, the reason why they know Boxford Center. And there's no reason why this project and this road can't be viewed the same way by the frequent users of it. So, that would be, that would be the traffic mitigation recommendation I would make.
Thank you.
Were there any, I'm sorry, were there any other questions? I just walked away without even asking.
No, I don't think so. I think that's it, well, for now. So, there's still some work that needs to be done within the right of way. There are some documents that need to be finalized and executed. We have Town Council with us tonight, Lisa, and I was hoping that she would discuss where we're at, what needs to happen and.
Sure.
Thank you.
Through the Chair and members of the Board, the, in order to, utilities are being provided by Utility Services in the Town of Georgetown, so they need permission from this Board to do work in your road. So we'll have to do an intermunicipal agreement with them that'll address construction, long-term maintenance, repaving, and then hours of access and things of that nature, types of construction, who they have to go to to get approval of the plans, to install the utilities. They'll have to get an easement from the Board as well for the utilities. And then a right of access to do work on the town section of the bridge as well. So, those are the three documents that will have to be drafted and agreed upon by the Town of Georgetown and the Utility Department and the DPW. And those will all come to this Board for review and approval at a later date when we understand what the drawings specifically are and how that will work out.
Great. Any questions from the Board before I move forward?
Alicia, let me just kind of, for folks that might not know, I do an awful lot with the wetlands in our town. I'm probably the selectman that does the most on the marsh and is doing the most with riverine and other things that affect our wetlands. And I just want to make sure everyone really realizes, I was around when Georgiana did the Newman Road culvert and it was ecological restoration and a bunch of other state agencies. So culverts take a little work to do them correctly and I think the Town folks should really understand that it is a significant thing that the Town is hiring an engineer, that everyone is working together to try to make this the best we can, you know, stream flows and everything else and the sides of it for washout and the right rails and everything else. Because honestly, if it was done incorrectly, I probably wouldn't vote for it. So it's going to be done, you know, the Town is dotting their i's and crossing their t's on this and, so I'd like to make sure that everyone realizes, we are going the extra mileage to do it as perfectly as we can.
Thank you, Jeff. So, next up, I would like, is, John, is your attorney Nancy McCann, is she present, the developer's attorney?
No, Nancy was not able to make it tonight. The rest of the team is here. Is there any questions specifically for Nancy?
So if you could just provide us an update on where, on the status of the legal documents which she's responsible and on the status on any approvals that you needed, that you're seeking from us?
Sure, I'll give you a, a quick update on.
They can't hear you from home.
No problem. Usually people think my mouth is too big, so they can be far away.
We'll take it tonight.
So for the record, John Coltoni, I'm in, in charge of the project. So Nancy McCann is our attorney. She's been working with Town Council. The way I understand it, some documents have been going back and forth. But for just a little bit of history, if you look back at the minutes when Newbury approved this, it even states in those minutes that easements will be provided at a later date by Town Council. So it was even thought of back then that some easements would have to be done, but it wasn't something that was going to be done then until they knew exactly what was going to be happening. So it's not something that is new now and I think that's very important because when the Board took the vote back then, you know, that was discussed. So Nancy's working with Town Council on that. I'm under the impression that it's, it's fairly close, that could be in front of the Board sometime this month. You would know better than I would on, on that.
Not if it's September.
No, no. When I say this month, I mean, I mean October, sometime in October. And Nancy does apologize, she had a medical, medical emergency, family-wise, that was pretty serious. So. So she's had to handle that over the last week or so. So on our update, I have Bill Manuel here, our wetlands expert, I have Ray Frazier, who's an engineer and owns the site company that's doing all the work. Peter Termini is here, who's been involved in this project, I think before any developer was involved in it, he's the one that actually put the sale together and the original land owner with the original developer and then to us. So we thought that would be a little history in case there's any questions there. Mike, our engineer from Moore and Cameron, is on Zoom. He just had a medical procedure the end of the week, and he's still joining us because we felt how important it was. And also, one of my partners is here, Billy in the back of the room. So we've tried to have everyone here, just Nancy's not the, Nancy's the only one that's not physically here. So we'll be glad to answer any questions on what's going on. Everything's been filed with Mass DOT. As everyone I'm sure knows in this room, you can't rush Mass DOT, they're at their own pace, which is not a problem. They've actually been great in talking with Mike. So they actually came back with an email with an approval of the, what I call, I'm using my terms, the structural of it, the weight of it, but they did have a bunch of questions. And then Shea Concrete, which is the company that we use to make the culvert, they got that diagram with figures back to us that we shared with you, we shared that with Mass DOT, you shared it with your peer review, Bayside Engineering. That developed some questions from Bayside Engineering that came to us, that Mike took. So those questions from Mass DOT, since they received the Shea Concrete information and the Bayside Engineering questions, those have now all been answered by our engineer and sent to Mass DOT. We're waiting now for Mass DOT to get back to us on what was put together for them. To skip over to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, we've filed everything with them, and they're at even their own pace compared to Mass DOT. And there's been some communication back and forth with them, and they've promised us no later, absolutely no later than the end of October, if not sooner. So we've filed everything that we've been able to, that we can file, and we've answered all questions from all parties that we're supposed to file to. And now we're in a wait mode on that. Our plan time-wise, to be very honest with the board and to all the neighbors, is hopefully to be able to have the culvert replaced this calendar year. That doesn't mean that the road would open this calendar year, that the culvert would be replaced this calendar year. And, and that's longer than what we actually wanted, but we respect the concerns and the due diligence that everyone's doing. We want to be a part of that and make sure that everything is done correctly. Some of the neighbors have reached out to me, I try to respond to them very quickly and give them answers. I'm in a very awkward position in buying this project with all approvals in place, that's how it was presented to us, that's how we purchased it, and the due diligence that we did, that's how it was. We did not know until after we purchased it and the site meeting on, that there was a concern from the neighbors of this level. With that said, as I've answered to many of the neighbors, and quite publicly about it, if public safety said to me that culvert should be closed, I would be doing everything in my power, I mean, the bridge should be closed, I would be doing everything in my power to keep it closed. When public safety says to us it needs to be open, even though I wanna make nice with the neighbors and I respect all their concerns, as far as we're concerned, we're 100% for to open that bridge and replace the culvert, when both towns from public safety say that's what should be done. So that's the direction that we're moving. On the business side of things for us, for us to be able to get our occupancy permit for these 10 houses, which the neighbors have all been very gracious, I don't think I've had one neighbor come up to me and say they're against the 10 houses, the concern's always been the, the bridge and the culvert. But it's part of our conditions for us to get occupancy permit, that the culvert has to be replaced with the bridge open. So it creates another twist for us, that even if public safety was saying that it should be closed, and the neighbors want it closed, and we wanna make it closed, it's a whole new approval process to get that orders of conditions removed. And someone would have to share with us not only how that would be done, but someone would have to pay for that entire approval process, because we do not have that budgeted, and why would we, all the approvals were in place. But I don't think that's even a concern, because public safety comes first, and that's why we're moving forward. So I have my whole team here for the board and the neighbors, we'll answer any questions that we can, and if there's anything else I can answer now, I'd be glad to.
I do have a follow-up question. So the peer review that our town did, Bayside Engineering, has your team responded to that yet?
We have taken all those questions. A lot of those questions were similar to Mass DOT. So all of those have been answered from Mass DOT. We, we're waiting for Mass DOT now to come back to us, because we don't wanna waste Bayside's engineering time or hours, and we think what Mass DOT comes back with, we'll answer everything for Bayside Engineering.
Okay.
If I may, may I ask my engineer a question?
Yes.
Mike, did I, did I say that properly on our game plan?
Yes, yeah. Through you, Matt and Chair, thank you for having me, sorry I couldn't be there in person. And yes, John, you did say that correctly. Essentially, I anticipate that we will be writing a response letter, though, to actually formalize the, our responses to those comments and how they were addressed. And it will, it will basically accompany a supplemental construction plan that we prepared, which is essentially was for the purpose of Mass DOT. So there will be what I'm calling a supplemental plan, that has a little bit more of the means and methods of construction, that is meant to supplement what was already approved. So we're not necessarily, we're not revising what was, what was approved, it's a supplemental with a bit of additional detail. And that, that will, once we have a bit of clear direction from DOT, I expect that that plan will be released with a response letter to Bayside.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Alicia, I'd like to thank John for his clarity and, you know, attention to detail. You did a good job. You answered a lot of questions for me.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Of the developer? I'm sorry, okay, so don't go anywhere, I'm gonna entertain questions from the board. Jerry's gonna go first.
All 10 houses are being built in Georgetown, correct?
Yes.
And can you or can you not build the 10 houses if the culvert and the, and the bridge were to remain closed?
It's an excellent question, and I've asked it with a few different answers, because the utilities, and Ray, you might be able to help me with this, the utilities with the replacement of the culvert play a big role on how they're coming across for the 10 houses. So for instance, if the bridge was gonna remain closed and we weren't gonna replace the culvert. Yeah, so it'd be a whole different process on how the utilities would come across.
But you could still do it.
So with that said, my answer is no. And the reason that my answer is no, because it comes to another whole problem that I mentioned a few minutes ago. It's gonna be another whole approval process, it's gonna be another whole amount of money engineering-wise. It's, it's a lot more than just simply saying, "Bridge is not gonna be open, now we'll bring the utilities a different way."
Thank you. Jeff, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I'd like to open it up to public comment.
I'll start.
Come on up. State your name.
We give everyone three minutes, I'll, you know, I'll let a little bit of run over and be discretionary, just so everyone's aware and try not to be repetitive, so everyone gets a chance to speak that wants to.
Hi, everyone, Justin Landergan, 38 Larkin Road. Just firstly, I wanna just start by saying thanks for having us. We respect the public officials, but we do have a lot of comments and concerns, a lot of us here tonight, so we'll try and get all our questions and comments in. So let me start from the top. We have done a pretty exhaustive review of the permitting process, as we understand it, we have solicited legal counsel regarding that review. I'll provide you documents that show, outline our understanding of the facts as they are, which is that the Newbury Planning and Select Board approved a 2015 plan in the town of Georgetown. That plan was not the final plan approved by, excuse me, the town of Newbury. The 2015 plan approved by Newbury was not the final plan approved by Georgetown. The plan in Georgetown was revised in 2018. The difference in those plans has to do with the movement of the electricity and the water in the culvert. So 2015 plan did not have the utilities running under the culvert, the 2018 plan did. The 2018 plan from Georgetown only came to Newbury Concom. It never came to the Newbury Planning Board or the Select Board. We believe that those, that change has to come to the Planning Board and the Select Board for separate review. The 2015 plan changed too materially to stand on its own. So that's the first thing. We think there's been a failure of thorough permitting here. I'll hand you the documents showing you all that in a minute. Along those lines, we think there have been process shortcuts that deeply concern us. First of all, the developer was issued a warning letter from the Army Corps of Engineers for fail, failure to follow proper permitting. Both the town of Newbury and Georgetown were copied on that correspondence. If the Army Corps is involved right now, we know that they probably will issue a permit, but certainly no decisions can be made at the municipal level if the feds are involved, correct? Additionally, if Newbury, Georgetown, and the developer all failed to engage the, follow proper procedures with the Army Corps, or within the permitting itself in Newbury, it begs the question, what other procedural shortcuts may have been taken? If we hadn't all come to all these meetings, would there have been a peer review of the culvert? Doesn't sound like it.
That's not true, that's not true.
Okay, well, we can talk about that. Why is the Orchard Street, Cart Street project getting total analysis by the feds, state, town, federal? Doesn't feel like this Larkin Crossing is getting the same amount of due diligence. We're very concerned about what's going on in terms of what's gone on here. So we respectfully ask that Newbury, that Ms. Mead and it's Brian Winner, take a deep dive on the documents we're gonna show you. Now, in spirit of time, safety, are there any dead-end streets in the town of Newbury right now?
Define dead-end.
Streets that don't have two means of egress. So for 12 years, roundabout, there's argument about how long the culvert's been dysfunctional or non-functional. We have not been hearing about concerns about 127% increased response times, right? The culvert's been closed. If this was a critical safety issue, the town of Newbury has enough money to replace that culvert. If the culvert's truly 250K, how much is in the general fund right now? Three, four million bucks? Why hasn't the culvert been replaced if this is a critical safety item? The members of the Newbury, town of Newbury that live on the Georgetown side are right here, they don't want the bridge open, they're not concerned about the safety, okay? Obviously, we want people to be safe, but we believe the bridge being open is a greater safety concern. It's freshly paved, speed limits don't do anything, we've never seen a patrol officer patrolling for speed on our street. Again, we respect police officers, we have nothing against you, we support the work you're doing, we've never had a cruiser posted on our street. We've never seen anyone pulled over on our street for speeding, no one follows speed limits, we all know that. Has there been any incident in the last 12 years that anyone can cite from the safety officers involving Newbury residents on the Georgetown side that were unable to be attended to as a result of the culvert being open, being closed? Can anyone cite an incident? Anybody? Okay, so.
You're over four minutes now.
You can have my free minute.
So.
It's not how it works.
The reason that the, that, the reason that Newbury didn't write a check to fix the culvert is because we all know this isn't a critical safety concern. Right now, what's going on is we have a developer from a neighboring town looking to put in his houses, which we can't fault him for, he's in business, that's what he wants to do, this isn't personal, gifting the town of Newbury a culvert, and he's here telling us that there can't be delays because it's gonna cost him money? And you want us Newbury citizens to be supportive of that? We're concerned about the safety first and foremost, this culvert being open is gonna jeopardize the safety of everyone in this community. The road is too narrow, the world has changed, we have delivery drivers up and down the street, speed limits aren't gonna cut it. Final piece, citizen opposition. 325 citizens strongly oppose this. Maybe there's someone in the room, is anyone in the room who's a citizen who's not involved, they're gonna make money on this deal, up for this? Anyone wanna support this? I don't see any support from the opposition. Are you here to represent us and our interests, or are we gonna listen to three people that think this is a good idea? We all strongly oppose this. We're not gonna back down, we're not gonna forget. You are gonna have to review this and make a decision again. If you stand your ground and support your citizens, let's, let me tell you what's gonna happen, because I know how the world works. Georgetown will be forced to roll over, and they will give this man his occupancy permits without that culvert open, because they're gonna need the tax revenue, okay? Let's not give them their water and electric revenue along the way and have them cut up our road to get it. Let's dig our heels in, let's support our citizens, let's keep this culvert closed, Georgetown will still get its tax revenue, because they will fault, they will fault. So we are, town of Newbury, 300-plus people, asking you, keep this culvert closed to through traffic. We can get creative, every time we try to talk to you about getting creative, an emergency gate, you just don't even listen, you shoot it down, "Oh, gates don't work." Let's have a gate, let's have it be a walking trail, let's have, let's think outside the box here, ladies and gentlemen, but we don't want this thing open to through traffic, no one does, it's a hazard, it's not safe. And we don't think formal process has been followed. There's some supporting evidence, I will now hand it off to my colleague.
Oh, thank you.
David Mada, 61 Larkin Road. Before I get started on this, and some of these things have been slightly addressed tonight, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it word as I wrote it. But I sent, Alicia, I sent you an email on Monday. I said, "My understanding is that this whole meeting was nothing more than us to voice our concerns, and I considered a blindside that the developer and everybody was allowed to bring their attorneys in and prepare for this, and we were not given any notice." I would have brought an attorney.
I have no attorney here.
I would, Nancy was supposed to come, I know Nancy, she was supposed to come. I've been told a million of these things.
So, excuse me, if I'm gonna hold a meeting and we're gonna discuss what's happening to, on your road, did you think I wasn't going to have, and the answer?
I, I sent you an email specifically asking, and you never responded.
I did respond to you.
To me?
Yes, I did.
Nope, I sit at my desk for the last two days.
I responded.
But anyway, I'm gonna read this. "I did some homework, some of these things people in the room can probably deal with. I stopped at the fire station today and asked about emergency response, because a lot of this is about emergency response. I asked directly because I have not really received an answer. I was told emergency response, they work in cooperation with the other towns, in this case, it would be Georgetown. But if it were chest pains or something like that, it was an emergency, Central Street would be the first responding, in lesser cases, it would be Georgetown. Keep in mind, the entire left side of the road before and just after the culvert in Newbury is in Newbury, only the right side is in Georgetown. So for 12 years, or maybe a little bit more, we had Newbury residents on the other side of the culvert with no way for Newbury to access these people in an emergency. Suddenly, it is a big issue, because Georgetown needs it, Georgetown residents need it. Maybe because someone else is gonna pay for the bridge that won't allow an emergency vehicle to cross, well, maybe that's the reason for. I also learned a few other facts. The lightest emergency vehicle they have down the street is 18,000 pounds. A typical fire truck weighs between 20 and 30 tons. I also found out there's a difference between a culvert and a bridge, we keep calling it a bridge. Culvert, and the engineers here can probably deal with this, is partially buried and is reliant on the support of the soil around it. Weight capacity is a factor, because soil and paving is put on top, and this is a force, and plus the force from the sides makes it less weight-bearing. A bridge is what we have on the other side of Larkin Road, it is designed for weight capacity. So either emergency access comes from Newbury, or the culvert, in my opinion, has to be bigger, much more expensive, or become a bridge. These are all technical points which are very relevant and important. Personally, I've always looked at it from more of a personal angle, more about home and quality of life. We have been on Larkin Road for over 20 years, I've seen the culvert open and closed. When it was open, the bridge culvert barely existed, there were portholes in the road, and didn't stop traffic from flying down the street, because it's mostly kids cutting through to go to Triton. Not ideal for, for dealing with kids on the street. Many people in this room tonight brought their homes when the bridge was closed, young families with young children, not to mention lots of pets as well. I have seen, I've seen and signed the petition, lots of people have signed it, I have yet to hear anyone that lives on the street on both sides of the culvert speak in favor of this road being open to through traffic. I've been in business myself for 35 years and have a lot of experience negotiating agreements, and I'm not saying that I have more knowledge or see something that others don't see, but I have learned a few things over the years. If things don't add up and make logic- If things don't add up and make logical sense to me, there's something we don't know. There's a bigger story, and this just does not add up. We, as residents of Newbury, vote you on this board. You have many duties and responsibilities, and I understand that you walk a fine line every time you come in here between legal, what is good for the town, what is good for the people, and what they are asking for. You also have a responsibility to protect the residents, their homes, and protect and elevate the quality of life in Newbury. That is what makes a community desirable to move to, live in, raise families, and contribute to a culture. So, when I see an overwhelming majority come to you and say, "This is what we want, to preserve our homes and quality of life," I don't understand why you're taking the side of the developer on this thing. I'm not sure it's a legal issue. We're not asking the developer not to build these homes. We are not asking that emergency access be denied. We are asking that a reasonable solution be discussed and agreed to so that everyone wins. This is the third time I've come before the board with, with the rest of the neighborhood. The board allows us to come and express our concerns, and we're thankful for that. It's a process. We understand that these things have to happen. Alternative solutions to this problem, instead, we just don't discuss them at all. I'm not sure where each and every one of you even stand on this issue. You were elected to the board to represent us, so you need to do it. The fact is, we can all get what we want if we just sit down and discuss alternative solutions, or can try, you can try and force feed us. In case you haven't noticed, we're pretty united on this issue. We're not going away. The next move is up to you. We all have discussed our options and done our homework. We're ready for the move in any direction we have to go. We can all get what we want. We just need to listen in here. Thank you.
My name is Connor Beaumont, 65 Locken Road. Speak to you as both a resident and as somebody that works within the real estate development industry. I want to just address the permitting process here and some areas that we believe have been circumvented. As Justin mentioned earlier, the 2015 plan that was approved by the Newbury Board and the Selectmen was not the same plan that was included and improved in Georgetown in 2018. Not only was the culvert's addition of water and electric services absent from that plan, there was also the curb cut that was absent from that plan. And frankly, speaking, just to address the, the comment and the question earlier about whether or not they are able to build these homes without that bridge, he answered no that it's, it's unfeasible because they didn't budget for it. Well, as a developer, if we're buying something that's a fully entitled, or at least advertises fully entitled and approved land, we do our due diligence to ensure that that's true before we get to work on it. If you don't do that, it's frankly, it's, it's on you. It would be on me, and we would call it a miss and call it a day. And so, just saying to the fact that, you know, we didn't budget for it is no excuse. And they came into a process that they didn't fully understand. They didn't vet it properly. And now they're in a sticky situation and just trying to force it through. Yes, would we do the same? Probably, in some circumstances. But frankly, we would have called it a win if it even got this far without being struck down just for simply not having gone through the proper permits. So, I'd just like that to be thought of, and I'd like to make sure that we do follow the proper process, and it goes back to be reviewed by the Newbury's Planning Board, and we have a revote by the Newbury Select Board as would be required. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hold for a second. Martha, can you, if you know this answer? What, do you know what they're referring to about the vote that the Select Board or the Planning Board took on this project in 2015?
The only vote that I'm aware of is the 2016 vote back in March where the developer came forward.
And I have these minutes here, March 8, 2016?
Yes. Sorry, clarification. March 8, 2016, on a vote based on...
Wait a minute, excuse me. You had to come up here. We're too crowded.
Let me take back my own, let me just borrow one of my own timelines. The, the vote I'm referring to was on 3/8/16 by the Newbury Select Board, March 16. A motion was made by Selectman Bear, seconded by Selectman Colby, and voted unanimously to support the proposed design for the Larkin Bridge culvert repair as proposed and submitted on March 8, 2015. So, it was passed in 2016, but it was presented in 2015. It then went to Concom in August 16, went to Concom again in 2/21/17, and then it went to Concom one more time, 3/19/19. It never came back before Planning Board or Newbury Select Board in any formal fashion with the revisions, including water and electric coming under the culvert, which we believe need to be, need to be revisited.
So, is there some confusion about what the Select Board voted on and what they think we voted on? That's what it appears to me.
I can't answer.
Because we never voted on the project. We voted on the culvert.
Right, right. It was on the developer's proposal to replace the culvert.
Are you, you don't have, uh, do you, Madam Chair?
Yes.
The board didn't have standing to vote on the project. You voted on whether or not you would allow the work on the culvert or accept the culvert.
Correct.
And it's my understanding that this has never gone to the planning board. The planning board doesn't have jurisdiction.
That's what I understood as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Come on up.
Thank you. Give me everybody. Jack Wright, 37 Locken Road. What, what you voted for in 2016 was to support the plan. There was never any verbiage to approve anything at that time. If you review the video, you'll see you voted to support. Clearly, support is not approval because the approval would come after the proper vetting process, which should have started with the Army Corps of Engineers and trickled down from there as opposed to the way it's going now. We're doing middle peer review on the project, which should have probably started at the beginning, but now we're, again, we're sandwiched into, into an issue. I, I, I submit that, again, only the culvert plan was voted on. The plan that was approved as the final OSRD for Georgetown included a second curb cut along Larkin Road. I submit that it, just like at the Witchstone OSRD, that's been recently through our permit process, we required the parking lot to service the access trails that are being gifted to us to be within the development because a second means of egress would create more traffic and more safety concerns. The second plan in 18 created a second means of egress further down Larkin Road, which wasn't part of the original build. That second means of egress, I believe, is a Planning Board issue and also a Concom issue that's not been addressed because it crosses what's referred to by, I believe, Mr. Christensen as an engineer, is called roadside wetlands. So, just like as we see a driveway approaches across swales, there's going to be, there's going to be some sort of a pipe necessary, a crossing, and as well, the land climbs very high at that time. And I believe slope is part of the Planning Board's purview in regards to curb cuts. So, that the slope, which is the regard, you know, which would be how that parking lot to service the trail, which is the gifted land that John's OSRD will give to Georgetown, creates another safety issue for us and a second means of egress that has never been addressed. That is on Newbury land. So, I think that although the culvert has been addressed, we can't vote on John's 10 houses for obvious reasons. It's in Georgetown, but his approach is certainly under our purview. That approach includes that second means of egress to that parking lot. Again, it crosses wetlands, and it is a means of egress. I use Witchstone as an example. Cart Creek is similarly even brought up. I offered to you that the Army Corps of Engineers is, is involved in that, and that no permitting has been involved as we feel through the process of what the Army Corps of Engineer will come to ask of us. In the same way, Larkin Road Bridge used to be flooded when it was replaced. As you can see, the federal guidelines are seriously different than what would be for a locally replaced culvert such as what we have. The idea that the Army Corps of Engineers won't look at it and look to improve it in the same way to prevent the flooding that you can see on the pictures came as a result of some of the storms and does continue to come on occasion and flood that existing height set of the culvert will create just putting a new culvert in with the same flooding problem, that it needs to be raised or something should be addressed by the Concom for the physical safety of us. I appreciate all the oversight that's being done. I think that it's incumbent on everybody to revisit it as we are now, but to also look at the, look at what we haven't addressed as well as what we still need to address because clearly, as, as has been shown and through the report here, I believe there's some absolute permitting necessary and some oversight to be done on our part outright in regards to the second means of egress and crossing, as well as waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers to make determinations before we can approve anything. It starts with the feds. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up, Rob.
Thanks. Okay, I'm Bob Ross. I live at 48 Central Street, and I was going to talk about something completely different. And I promise I'll tie this in, but if anyone's interested, there's a bird at the Spencer Little Farm that has only been seen in Massachusetts five times in our history. Okay? So, it's a Pacific Golden Plover, and its range is from southern Alaskan coast to Washington State. It's never seen on the side of the Rockies. It's very rare. So, if you want to see it. But I'll tie that in, I promise. Okay? So, um...
Great. How I get to off the traffic on the I-road?
And John, guys that are looking at birds don't care where they park.
Do I, do I get a percentage of the tickets that you guys need? All right, good. So, in, in terms of timing, I, I just wanted to ask you a question about this. So, what you're saying is you're going to lose roughly a minute and a half if you go around the other way, right? Would you say it's 110 seconds or something, or...
Yeah, it's 110 seconds with the bridge over, the culvert bridge open. It's 250 seconds. Four minutes, 10 seconds currently. It's 1 minute 50 seconds if it was open.
Right. So, you're losing about a minute and a half, it sounds like.
Have you sat over somebody with chest pains for a minute?
Well, no, I'm not going there.
That's, oh, okay, good. That's what I have.
No, I know, but I'm not, that's not, I mean, I defer to you on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Where I'm going is, you have a reciprocal agreement with Georgetown that if they can get there quicker than you, they'll do it. Is that not correct?
As far as dispatching, whoever can get there quickest is going to be going there quickest. They communicate themselves, you know, about availability, what EMS is going to go. But regardless of any of what you're saying, I mean, if, if Georgetown can't, it's going to be us. We have to live in the what-if. And again, I can only say for a graphic, stand over somebody for that amount of time with chest compressions, waiting for somebody to come, and that minute is an hour. I don't care what anybody says. So, you, you're really, really focused. You have to factor that in. And I, not to go off on a tangent here, but there was a reference made by Mr. Lundigan about residents that are concerned about, you know, the, the response doesn't trump their concern about the potential safety issues that might be in place if it was open. But that sentiment is always the sentiment until you, until it's not, until you need it. And then it's, then you'll be all right. I can promise you, you can say, "I'm good. I'm good with the extra minute and a half. I'm good with two minutes if, you know, if it keeps my, 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 my street closed," until it's not. And I have to live in the world until it's not, so...
Well, I haven't said that. But what, my point is, there's another what-if, and this is a what-if. If you have to respond to an emergency down Larkin Road with substantially more traffic, there's no shoulder. Okay? So, you can't necessarily go as fast as you can go if you go down Central because it's a wider street. And if you pull someone over on Larkin Road, where do they pull over? There's no place to pull over. So, again, if you consider the traffic, and what I'm not hearing anybody talk about is, what's the estimated traffic increase? Because if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, it's 35 miles per hour on the other side of that bridge. So, if people come across there going 35 miles an hour, and they're going to go down to 25, I mean, I'm not a public safety official. I don't have statistics, but I would guess, based on just anecdotal evidence, that's not going to happen.
Well, I can't speak on hypotheticals, but I can use my Oxford example. If the tone is set, it's 40 miles an hour up before you get to the 25, and people slow it down to 25 once they learn the culture. The onus is on me, and the responsibility is on me and my department to teach that message.
Okay. Now, that's a much more populated area. So, the feeling that that's rural, okay, is going to contribute to people trying to get to 95 to work speeding up that road. I don't think there's any question about that. So, the question though I have is, has there been any study been done as to what effect that will have on the safety of the people who live there? So, for instance, now, I see kids in the road all the time, riding their bikes. I see people walking up and down that road all the time. And what will the effect of traffic, like, okay, so, we all know that you can post 25 mile per hour signs wherever you want. Okay? The real question is, what will be the speed that people will drive on that road? And I think even in a 25 mile per hour zone, I mean, I don't know how many people stick to 25 miles per hour. Now, you could say you can enforce it, but you can't be everywhere. We all know that. So, my question is, what's the trade-off between the hypothetical of having to respond to someone having a heart attack and the hypothetical of some kid getting hit in the road because someone's going 40 miles per hour trying to get to 95? They're both hypotheticals. Okay?
They both have the same weight.
Right. Exactly. So, the question is, if you're going to study that, then to say there's a safety issue, it seems to me like you have to study, what's the increase in traffic? What's the likelihood that people are going to speed? And what's the speed you can go at when you're doing the time test between the leaving, from going around Central Street or going down Larkin Road? The thing that's missing there in the numbers is the speed. So, can you keep the same speed on both roads consistently? It would seem to me like you can go much faster on Larkin and, or on Central and Jackman than you can on Larkin Road. But I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't know for sure. So, these are questions I think that should be answered, and I appreciate Jeffrey saying that you crossed all the i's and dotted all the t's. And I have very limited experience with this, but I've hired a ton of contractors to do various jobs, including one this week, who after he tore up my walkway, the price went up by almost 70%. Okay? So, the question I would have is, is there a contingency for when somebody comes to you guys and says, "You know what? I budgeted 225,000, but it's going to be 300 grand, and I don't have a 75." Okay? So, that could easily happen. I don't think, it's not speaking to anybody's honesty. It's just, we all know, and we've all been told, the price materials is going through the roof every day. Or at least, that's the excuse I'm getting from my mason. Okay? So, the question is, until that's paid for, we really won't know what it's going to cost. And so, my final question is, when you talk about the price of the culvert and the price of re-permitting, are those equal? Because it would seem to me like the price for permitting would be substantially less. So, if you have to re-permit, right, as opposed to paying for the culvert, what you're going to lose is time. And I appreciate how time is money. So, I'm not, you know, that's for you to figure out, but it would seem to me like the re-permitting process is going to be cheaper than what the culvert's going to cost. the culvert's gonna cost. So.
Are you asking me a question?
Well, yeah, if you know, I mean, I don't know, I'm going to answer, I don't know.
I'll, I'll let you finish, through the chair, I'll, I'll answer a few questions.
Okay, all right. So I think it's kind of, it's surprising to me that we're sitting here talking about this and no one's complaining about the development, which I think is notable. You know, we're all saying, hey, we don't, that's fine, like, you don't go in there, build houses, sell them, who cares? That's gonna add to the traffic too. So has there been any survey of like what that will add to the traffic on Larkin? So it seems to me there's a lot of unknowns, and one last point, I know I'm taking too much time, but, so I wrote this to you in email, and you didn't respond, but it wasn't really a question. So there's a weird situation there, which is, we have a water, drinking water source that's taken a hundred yards down from a roadway, okay? Now that, I don't know how unusual that is, it would seem to me that it would be, and here's why. So you are gonna increase the traffic on that street, you're gonna increase the chemicals that result from that traffic, and they're all going into that water system. If you look at that area, there are hills that go right down into that area, and that's where the runoff's gonna go. So just, I mean, I know a little bit about this because it's kind of what I do for a job, but, and abstracts are with, but um most town water systems do not filter out petroleum distillates, and by the way, bottled water companies don't either, okay? So petroleum distillate's almost impossible to, to filter out, and that's what you're gonna get with more traffic. You're gonna get more petroleum distillates washing into the water supply. And that's all I wanna say.
Thank you.
All right.
Before we continue, um I just wanted the board to, no, I'm gonna pass this out, that the, today Julie got a letter from the Georgetown Select Board, they had a meeting last night, um and they had, I'll just pass it to you, I can, I'll read it um after we've done with public comment, but I just wanted you guys to have it. Okay, somebody else had their hand up?
Can I let him read?
Hi, my name's Barbara Del Forty, and I live at seventy-nine Larkin Road, and I'm right, I'm the first house on the Georgetown side, even though I'm in Byfield, I'm on the other side. Um, and I can tell you as far as the safety issue goes, that um for years, Susan and I could see in our living room, and when that road was like, it was like a campground road, i- it blew our minds the way people would speed down that road because, you know, e- e- even for their own self-preservation, we saw people snap their axles several times. So if it's paved, I'm sure that that's only gonna, you know, and like you said, you know, you can put up, you can post the, the, but people speed, um so that's one safety issue. My bigger concern, because my land abuts the Wheeler Brook and the Parker River, is that um I kept waiting through a lot of these meetings to see like, you know, when the Army Corps of Eng- Engineers were gonna, you know, um weigh in on this. So I was a little concerned that that hasn't been like a part of the process, um wasn't at some point earlier in um the process. So um my concern is that the current culvert that's there, um whether it's an open road or a closed road, actually be able to handle the, you know, high flood flow at different times, like the Mother's Day, you know, flood that, you know, as I said, I have four acres from my house, you cannot see the Parker River, and during that flood time, and um it was about twenty, thirty feet from my house. So that, the, having the right size structure in place is really of importance to me, you know, whether it's a culvert or a bridge. So I'm assuming that when the um Army Corps of Engineers does their review, or the Department of Transportation, will they take that into account that this has been insufficient as-is?
Well, they're gonna replace what's there, so.
Yeah, but if that's insufficient.
Whatever, whatever project, whatever goes in there.
Yeah.
Will be reviewed, it has, has already been re- reviewed by another engineer that does these types of uh wa- uh, not just a culvert, but a, a road culvert with water under it.
Right.
And the Army Corps, I believe, that's not our jurisdiction, but I believe that they've been in- involved in this. Um, and it will be.
In DOT.
In, in the Mass Department of Transportation weighs in at the end, it will be safe. It will be wide enough, it'll be, I believe it will be wider than it is now, and I believe it, I mean, it will be safe. So with, the town of Newbury is not, I will not vote for a project for anything that's gonna be more harmful than it is. I don't care if it was, if it was free, because it's not gonna be free in the end.
Right, and, you know, I'm particularly, you know, concerned with that aspect of this because as it is now, we all know it doesn't handle the floodwater as well, so that would be my concern, and just that when I came to an earlier meeting, I think you, Mr. Walker, indicated that you didn't even think that um the Army Corps got involved with this type of thing, and it's my understanding that they pretty much have jurisdiction over every frog and fly and anything else in a water way.
It's, it's, it's kind of, if I said that, I was mistaken because they're involved with EPA that does go up all the streams and trickles to the beginning, and that's the enforcement branch, and they're involved.
Okay, well, that makes me feel better, that you're saying you were mistaken, because, you know, my land is the one that's underwater, and I wanna ensure that the Army Corps of Engineers has done a review.
I probably have known that since, you know, for years and years, so if I said it differently, it came out rocky.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Is there any, may I ask, oh, yeah, excuse me, ma'am. Is the culvert um over the Wheeler Brook or the Parker River?
Wheeler Brook, and then it, the Wheeler Brook joins with the Parker River, and my property borders both those bodies of water. So when there's high flood situations, we're getting inundated from the side and the back.
So you're an island?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, I can't, acres of my land were underwater during that Mother's Day flood.
That was horrible.
I mean, it really was. And the point I, I just wanna s- uh make too is that, you know, with um, you know, the, the weather and the climate changing the way that it is, you know, I think, I'm not sure I, whether that was seven or nine inches that, during that storm, but had there been one or two more inches within a short period of time, I know that the water would've got into my house. And so we see those things, we keep seeing hundred-year storms happening, you know, all the time now. So I'm really concerned that, again, what gets put in place there is able to redirect that water down into the Parker instead of going onto my land.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything that is new, anything that we haven't heard yet?
Catherine Landergan, thirty-eight Larkin. I just have two quick points. One is um the five-year moratorium on digging up our roads, and it seems as though the utilities are something that could really derail this, but we don't see why we can't dig up much less if any road and give them Byfield water and National Grid from the poles and pipes right there. Um, again, we welcome our neighbors. The other thing I wanted to um bring up was Meg Rogers of seventy-five Larkin Road could not be here tonight, and I uh wanted to read this for her. I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting as I have two small children under the age of four, my husband's traveling for work. I've asked Catherine to speak on my behalf to voice our concerns as direct abutters to the bridge and the development with safety concerns that the bridge opening poses, and I will be watching the live stream from home. Safety for our community is the number-one concern for most of the homeowners on both Larkin and Parish. We are not opposed to the development. Uh, it's the bridge that's been closed and sitting in disrepair for over a decade that we are against, along with over two-hundred other citizens and neighboring ten- developments and towns. Road is simply too narrow for, through traffic. In many spots, two large vehicles cannot pass each other without one driver going off the pavement to do so. What used to be dirt on both sides is now newly paved, which will only increase speed around the most dangerous spots to navigate. The argument that this used to be a through street isn't a valid reason for opening the bridge. By that r- logic, should Chute Street be reopened over ninety-five simply because it used to be a throughway to North Street and Georgetown? There are several things that have changed since the bridge closed over a decade ago, and it's not safe to have Par- Parish-Larkin Bridge opened through traffic. Emergency vehicles that need to access the development have a faster, easier route via Larkin than Parish. The station downtown Georgetown can get here using East Main Street to ninety-five for the quickest response time, not the backroads via Jewett and Parish. The Erie Force Station on North Street is best served to come over the highway down Larkin, not the backroads via Jewett and Parish. And most importantly, Byfield Fire is right at the end of Larkin and will be the first to respond in the event of an emergency. Using emergency access is the reason the bridge must be re- reopened is farcical. Is that how you say that? Nice word, I. That's like a Jeopardy word, that's a big Scrabble word, okay. Newbury residents on the Georgetown side of the bridge have been cut off from Byfield Fire, easily the fast, fast emergency response, for over a decade, so safety hasn't been a concern for them, and those residents are opposed to the bridge opening. The odds of a child, including my two or three, getting hit or a serious car accident occurring using this narrow windy, windy road, far outweigh the odds of a resident of the new development unable to receive prompt response times from one of the three neighboring stations. It's a hazard to the community, and these streets are safest with the bridge closed to true thr- to through traffic. Period. Thank you for your time, Mr. and Mrs. Alan Rogers of seventy-five Larkin Road.
Is there anything new that we haven't heard? New?
This is new.
New, okay. You'll be next, sir.
I'm Joan Mader, I live at sixty-one Larkin Road. I've had to call an ambulance for my father eighteen times in one year. He lives at, he lived at Caldwell Farms. I, seven minutes from my, my, from my house to his. There was not one ambulance that made it there before fifteen. So when you give me a minute and a half difference when you have three towns going to respond to something, I have a problem with it, because it took a long time. My father had chest pains three times, he broke his leg, he had seizures. It was a nightmare, and it took forever. The police were there at the first, I gotta give them that, and they were great, but to get my father on the ambulance, to get them to either Anna Jakes took quite a long time. So when you mention a minute and a half, I get angry. Okay, I'm just gonna say that. Georgetown used to do drills across the street on that property.
Across the street from where?
It was my house on Larkin Road. So um diagonally across from the development, and they used to do fire drills at night. Do you know how they got there? Larkin Road, because they couldn't cross the bridge. And you know what? An ambulance couldn't cross that bridge either, cause I have a truck, and I wouldn't have dared cross the bridge in my truck. And that was when it was open. So to expect this to be built that can house fire apparatus and ambulances, you know, and I know, it's gonna be Newbury that's gonna take that call. And I hope they get there in time, because it was a nightmare for me. Okay, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you. I just wanna, there's some misinformation here, that's, I'm hearing that this road's been closed for a decade. It hasn't been closed for a decade. It failed on September seventh, twenty-fourteen. That's when it, you know, it's coming up in a decade, but it hasn't been ten, ten years. Okay, sir?
It's a long time.
It is a long time.
Frank Boblo, uh twenty-nine years I've been living on Larkin Road at sixty-five. I have a history of uh public safety was, was my career. Um, so a couple issues uh to bring up is just, just to bring in a little bit more historical of, of what has happened in that road in the twenty-nine years I lived there. When I first um moved there, we had the Wooden Bridge, which, which is now the new Corps of Engineer Bridge, which, which can handle more, and uh always had the culvert, and the, and the road was dirt. Uh, Larkin Road was a dirt road. The culvert at that time, the culvert bridge, was, was a five-ton limit, so there was, there was no fire apparatus responding that way anyways. Um, what the problem is, is, and, and that was in the nineties, as things came up, as, as, as time changed, we lost the other bridge, that one, that one improved. It went from a eight-ton bridge to now there's no, no weight limit on it. Uh, the first bridge on Larkin Road, the Parker River Bridge. Back in those days, when, when, when the road was dirt, dirt and stuff, I can remember several times we had rollover cars, they, they used to call it the Chute, Chute Curve, where it curves, and that's where I live, right on the curve, and the, and the chief can probably, several times, rollover cars there. Um, what, what had happened is, as the nineties went on, and, and the bridge got improved, Waze and, and uh Google Maps came along, and the industrial park in Georgetown on Jewett Street started to boom. That now became, the Larkin Road, Larkin Parish became the quickest route from Route ninety-five to the industrial park in Georgetown. Not only did we have the school traffic, which we always dealt with, you can deal with it, but then you had the industrial park traffic. We had trucks coming through there constantly, and they were going over the five-ton bridge, the, the culvert, and that's probably what actually uh led to that, that finally failing. The ten houses, okay with it. Those people are stakeholders. They'll be stakeholders in the new, uh, in the neighborhood. They'll watch the twenty-five miles an hour. But a person on Waze trying to get to the industrial park does not care about the twenty-five miles an hour, and you know that chief as well as I do. And that increase of traffic is phenomenal, and I can say that as a personal witness, watching it as I lived on that road. The amount of vehicles that go through there that are just rushing over to get to the industrial park will really increase the traffic there, and it'll probably upset the uh, the stakeholders in the new neighborhood too, because that is, I think, what, what, what the concern is, is on having that as, as a, as a road directly through. Um, the other thing too is, what we haven't experienced is, Larkin Road is no longer dirt. It's a paved road. It's a smooth road. You open that road, it's now a thoroughfare from Route ninety-five to the industrial park. Forget about Triton, forget about the, the neighbors. It's just that industrial park and all the business that occurs over there, and the access to the highway. Right now, Tenney Street through Georgetown is the means to get there. You open that road, that becomes the main, main uh thoroughfare to get from Route ninety-five to the industrial park. Uh, I don't think uh that neighborhood can handle it, that road can't handle it. I, I will comment though on one thing as far as uh public safety and response time goes. I understand what the, the chief is saying, and I agree with him, as far as time, seconds or hours, when you're dealing with response time. One thing that hasn't been taken into account though, and that's just the assumption that you're going from one spot, Central Street and Larkin Road. Anytime during the shift, we know the cruiser, the ambulance, can be somewhere else. Sometime that quickest response to the parish roadside of the culvert is gonna be from Elm Street down Parish Road. We know, it's, it's a roll of the dice when the public safety comes. As far as fire trucks, again, the old culvert, they couldn't cross it anyways, legally. It was a five-ton limit, so they were coming from the other side anyways. I just wanted to throw that as a perspective, you know, historical perspective from the time I was there, that uh maybe should be considered, cause we could be entering a time that we haven't seen yet, that's a paved Larkin Road as a, as a, a throughway from a major highway to an industrial business. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, is there anything new that we haven't heard yet?
Dave Boblo, fourteen Larkin Road. Uh, when everything is said and done, you've decided what you're gonna do, um, I think it would be prudent to consider local traffic only, to go along with your twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. And the fact that these people, you just mentioned, that they're coming from that industrial park, and that they're not gonna care. And you're not gonna be there every day, not gonna be there all day. So just recently, um, a couple mornings ago, I was out with my dog early in the morning, Mercedes-Benz went by, he was doing fifty, sixty miles an hour.
Did he do it late?
I did not. Still dark, and he came, he came flying back the opposite way, cause obviously he was following Waze, or something, something like that. So to that point, local traffic only, I'd like to ask you to consider that as a viable option.
Today, that would only be local traffic.
That is, yes, it is, but still, if you got, and you know, has there been a number? Is there a number of what the traffic increase is expected? Has anyone actually done the math, done the research?
Well, it's my hope that we can put, if this road opens, uh, we can put mitigation into play, um, that uh would limit the traffic going down that. Um, we can lower the speed limit, we can uh say, you know, residents only, not, you know, don't, we can encourage um truck, no trucks, uh truck traffic. Uh, it might affect, we're not, we're not there yet.
Great, all wonderful considerations.
They're not, we're not there yet.
And being here this evening, what I've learned this evening, I have to ask a question. Why wasn't it a concern that we can't get across that bridge for the number of years it has been closed? Why is it Newbury hasn't taken the time to actually open it just for that reason?
I, I think I have an answer for that. Um, if I go back to the timeline of what happened originally, the culvert failed in twenty-fourteen. When the DPW closed the road, they got an estimate on fixing it, and the estimate came in at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The town, as much as people think that the Select Board has an open checkbook and can write whatever we, we want, it's not how our government works. Town meeting has to spend the money. So we would need to wait to go to town meeting in the spring and ask town meeting to approve two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to replace the culvert, which is why the road was closed, and that's why it never was fixed. Before that opportunity came to be, before the spring town meeting came, a developer came to the town and said, we wanna put this project, this Livingstone, we wanna put this project in, we're willing to pay for the culvert. So the Select Board voted yes. Now, they had permitting in hand. So through a series of unfortunate events, the project stalled, permitting still remained. The town of Newbury legally, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong at this, I don't believe the town of Newbury could legally go back on those approvals, because we would, I mean, help me out here.
Well, you, you haven't approved anything if what has been reported. You supported the bridge to be reopened and, and upon which the contractor in the town of Georgetown relied, right?
Right, but the Conservation Commission had given to them.
Yeah, they've got the, they've got their order.
Their order of conditions and, and everything.
And that can't change.
So I think we were in a precarious spot, and we were just expecting.
And we were just expecting this project to go. And when the project didn't go and it stalled and it stalled and it stalled, then this gentleman picked, picked it up and that's where we are today.
Well, thank you very much.
Hope that's clear.
Just a quick question, I could ask you some quick questions. Are you limited to only having a town meeting once a year? Can you call a town meeting?
We could call a special town meeting, yeah.
Right, so you wouldn't necessarily have to wait for the next spring, you could call it any time.
We, yeah, but I don't think we would've called it for that one item.
Well, that might-
If it was critical, safety issue.
Just a quick point as a matter of talking about money. The small bridges program that the Lenny Mira runs, which you utilized to pay for the Main Street Bridge actually had a balance, six-figure balance, hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars, state monies. At that time, you had the option of replacing the Larkin Road Bridge with state monies, no money out of our pocket. You elected to fix a culvert down on Scotland Road. So the idea you haven't had the option to address it without cost to the town is just noted for the record.
Yeah, but you have to recall that the town had a developer that was, that, and the town-
That's not the point.
No, no, I'm sorry, okay.
You had the option to use state funds and you chose not to, that's the point I'm making.
The town, and, and the point that I'm making is the town had an opportu, it had a developer in hand that was going to replace a culvert. Now, somebody over here in the audience here has, come on up.
I'm gonna kinda piggyback off of Jack, I'm Cheryl Floyd.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I actually live in, on Parish Road in Georgetown. I'm the second to last house from the actual bridge. My first question is, if this developer was not building this development, would the bridge, bridge be fixed and when?
Yes, the culvert would've been fixed years ago. If nobody had, had-
Well, didn't you just say that?
If, if there wasn't a developer that wanted to purchase, that had permitting in hand. So if, if this developer goes away, if everything goes away, the town is responsible for fixing that culvert.
But they weren't back in 2014 or thirteen or-
They had, they had a project, they had the order of conditions, they had somebody that was going to fix it. They had a vote of the board that was gonna fix it.
If there was a development, not, are you saying that even if there wasn't a development, there was a vote saying that we're gonna fix it?
No, no, I'm saying that we had a development going in.
Right, but my point is, if there was no development going in,
Yeah.
when would the bridge have been fixed?
Probably the year in 2015 at some point. We probably would've gone to town meeting-
I don't think that development was in Georgetown's board-
No, no, you're asking me about the culvert, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, so if there was no, no opportunity for somebody to come in and ask us to replace that culvert, the following spring of town meeting, that would've gone on the warrant. We would've asked town meeting to approve and it would've, culvert would've been fixed then.
Okay, so then the developer that was here before Livingston, when did they pull out of this whole deal? Wasn't that like in 2016?
I, I don't think they ever pulled out. I think they just, he just purchased it.
I don't know.
I don't.
We don't know that? So we don't know whether he would've continued with it? Do you know that? When the other developer pulled out of the deal or sold it to you and-
Are you talking about Livingston? Yeah, roughly when we closed in March or April, that's when he-
Oh, this year?
That's correct.
So we're still talking from 2014 or 15 till 2021? It was just under the assumption someone was gonna pay for the bridge, so we'll just wait that long, just in case someone comes in to do it. And if they didn't, then so be it.
No, they had a, we had a developer that approved the project.
Right, I, I guess, am I not saying it right? Do you guys understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
I, I thought I was being clear. I, all right, I don't know. If you wanna just skip that or maybe revisit that, I don't know.
I, I don't know, but what's, what's the point?
The point is it wouldn't have been done at all had a developer not purchased that land.
Oh, that, that, no, that's not true. That's not true. The town would've, the town would've had to fix that. They would've fixed it.
Okay, you're saying that they will, I'll have to take your word for it. I don't believe that, but I, whatever. My second point or question is, and it may not have to do with Newbury or not Newbury, we've talked about the Conservation Commission. We didn't talk about any wildlife endangerment.
Yeah, that's not appropriate.
So, but, so my question just being though that because this is on both sides of, you know, we've got Newbury and Georgetown, was any of that taken into consideration with the bridge? Because what we were told when it was approved last time was that all the wildlife at the bridge, we all know there's all kinds of turtles there, there's turtle eggs, there's herrings, a, a ton of wildlife. We were told that those would be relocated and then put back after the new culvert.
That's under Georgetown's purview.
So that, even though the bridge-
That's not us.
So the water in the bridge is, is you, but the animals are Georgetown?
The culvert, the culvert.
No, I mean, I'm not trying to be a smart guy, I'm just-
I'm gonna let town council decide.
There's an order of conditions from the town of Newbury. I assume there's an order of conditions from Georgetown, I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah.
All of that has to be taken into consideration when the order of conditions is issued. The order of conditions was issued, it was an appeal, and it was extended, and it was an appeal. So that was all under the purview of both-
Both towns.
Conservation Commissions. The review of wildlife habitat, all under the Conservation Commission. All approved, not appealed, extended, not appealed.
Okay, and then my last thing, and I'll, and I'll go back and sit down. I would prefer all of the, you know, plows to take down my plow, my, my mailbox every year, as they do, when they're turning around and people turning around in my driveway, than I would to go back to when we first moved on that road and it wasn't opening, you know, an open road. Because the, the traffic, number one, and more of a concern, the speed that everyone was going was insane. I'm very lucky that I live very far from the road, but I see now there's a lot of kids on that street and I know, I'm just kinda repeating what these people said.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, is there anything new?
Yeah, I have one question. My name's Susan Campbell, I live at seventy-nine Larkin Road. These permits that like are going from one contractor to another, how, how long are these permits good for?
So, to the extent that, so it depends on the permit. The order of conditions, I don't know when it expires. I think we've talked about it earlier, it was given a three-year extension.
It expires in August, August 31st, 2021, 2022, sorry.
2022, so there you go. So I don't know how, what the condition is of the permits in Georgetown. I will tell you that all of these permits got extended over COVID pursuant to special legislation. So all the permits, not just here, but across the Commonwealth, were extended there, deadlines were extended because of the COVID shutdown. So you can add those dates onto that.
Thank you.
Okay, anything new?
Can I just help her clarify her question if she would like?
You can clarify with her afterwards.
Well, I wanna clarify with you actually.
Come on up.
So I think if I, tell me if I'm wrong. Okay, so I think what she's trying to say is, if the town thought this was a crucial thing to have, why wait on a developer? So let me be a little bit more blunt about this. So this is a town-
Why spend two-hundred-and-fifty grand on something that's gonna be paid for?
Well, let me ask this, let me, I won't, I don't, let me, let me ask this. Public safety is the first one. And the second question is, we spent eight million on a police station. So if we're talking about public safety, immediate concerns, if this is a safety issue, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars doesn't sound like a lot. But I think what she's trying to say is, you could say that they would've approved it and they would've built it, but there's no evidence for that. I mean, that's, you saying that's what you would like to do, but everybody has to vote on it, right? So I think, I'm just trying to clarify what she's saying, okay, that's it.
Thank you. So we got some correspondence from the town of Geo, of Georgetown regarding the repair and opening of the Larkin Road Bridge located in Newbury, Mass. Just wanna read it in for the record. As the Larkin Bridge is located in Newbury, Mass, and the decision for repairing and reopening the bridge is a decision solely in the hands of the Newbury Select Board, the Georgetown Board will support whatever decision the Newbury Board comes to. The Georgetown Board heard public comment at a recent meeting allowing the residents of Newbury and Georgetown to express their views on the subject. The Georgetown Police and Fire Chiefs were also in attendance and expressed their opinions and are in agreement. They believe the repair and the opening of the bridge is in the best interest of public safety and emergency vehicle response times. The Georgetown Board values and supports our public safety teams and we acquiesce to their discretion, to their direction on this subject. It should also be noted that residents of Newbury and Georgetown live on both sides of the bridge. We, the Georgetown Board, believe both communities should ensure Larkin Road connecting to Parish Road have a limitation on vehicle size and weight. Large commercial vehicles should be restricted from access as a cut-through, excluding those used for public safety. With regards, Doug Dawes, Chairman, the Georgetown Board is selected. So that's what we have here.
I have a question, can I ask?
Come on up.
David made a lot of wrong, I still haven't heard anybody address the capacity because the one thing that's stuck with me today from talking to the firemen is they said, you know, if anybody has a heart attack, the fire department shows up with the ladder truck and the vanter truck, and there's twenty to thirty tons. And they said to me, these are the people that drive the trucks, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar culvert is not gonna handle a ladder truck. So now you're talking about emergency vehicles, but you gotta keep heavy vehicles off the culvert. And I'm not an engineer, I don't build these things, but that's the people that drive these trucks, that there's no way that thing has to be four times the cost.
So I'm gonna ask our fire chief, Doug. Can you respond to that, please?
When engineering is should, I, I would assume that we would be built to sustain a fire truck, is my understanding.
Yeah, the ladder truck not being able to go over the bridge.
If it's built properly, it can. I would assume it would be built properly, that's new. That's my assumption, maybe eventually I can figure out. Sorry, not the one that was there.
Right. Okay, so replacing with it, with what is there, he's saying his trucks can't go over it.
James, is a-
And then they, then they can't get to us anyway. So the response-
James.
The new plan would be an H20 load-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, okay? Don't, please don't yell out again, there's a, it's crowded in here, please. James, can you please address this?
The new culvert would be an H20 load, which is basically unlimited.
It's what?
No, it would handle-
He said twenty to thirty tons.
Yeah, it'll handle, it'll, an H20 load will handle it, any, any, any fire truck.
Okay, thank you. So the new culvert would handle a fi, a fire truck? Mr. Collantoni?
He answered it.
Okay.
And, and when the time comes, I'd like to, there's a few things that popped up here that I think we should address.
All right, come on up, cause we're gonna have this conversation tonight.
As I stated at the very beginning, we walked into a situation here that we did not expect. Not at the beginning and not even this evening. We were asked to come to this meeting. We didn't invite ourselves. We're asked to bring as many people from our team as, as possible in case any questions came up in different avenues. So it's very important for me to say publicly, we weren't bringing our lawyer here to lawyer up. Like, that's just-
We weren't even told about it.
Do you wanna have the floor? You can, no, through the chair, you can have the floor.
Yeah, excuse me, excuse me. Sir, please, come on up.
So, so I, I think it's very important, we're not here to make enemies. We're, we're here because we're asked to come here to answer questions. Through the chair, this is important for my team to understand. Because we don't understand this. The people that are in the audience, we respect everything that they're saying. How could we argue with anything that you're saying? Some of you, twenty-nine years-
Sir.
Like, I'm sorry.
Address the board, thank you.
Twenty-nine years, the children, like, we respect all that. But when you hire a fire chief and a police chief, and you don't just have one community, you have two communities that say it's a public safety issue, how do we even put ourselves in this situation to do this development and not listen to them? That, that's, that's a real struggle for us. Think about everyone in these chairs in here, how much money this development, my project would save if I didn't replace this culvert and open this bridge? Like, we would save a lot of money. So business-wise, it's to our best interest, you know, let's keep it closed. But I can't do that and will not do that until someone, public, public safety-wise says that this can be closed. When they say that, I'm sitting in the chairs of all these neighbors and saying, let's keep this bridge closed. Because that's gonna save us a ton of money and it's not a public safety issue. But my team, we can't just turn our back to the public safety officials. So that, that's a, a big problem that everyone needs to understand.
All right.
The, the other thing is, we're not taking any shortcuts whatsoever. This must, misunderstanding that a few people have, that it seems on the US Army Corps. The misunderstanding on our part was, we thought it was a self-verification, which is a way that, there's two avenues that you go with US Army Corps. We thought it was gonna be a self-verification avenue. Because of how things changed, it wasn't. So when we found that out, not a problem. We went the route that the US Army Corps wanted and got them everything that they needed. So no one was trying to take any shortcuts there. Just like Mass DOT, we gotta go to Mass DOT. Someone said that those things should be done before even approvals. I could be wrong, I've done a lot of projects, but I learn stuff every day. Very, slight chance that someone's gonna go through Mass DOT, the US Army Corps, before they even have a project approved. Like, that would just be a, a waste of time. Why are you gonna do that before you even know if you can do the project? If, when we, if it continues that we're gonna open, you know, do the culvert and everything, everything will be done a hundred percent correctly, inspected a hundred percent. The Frazier Company, one of the best site companies on the North Shore, if not in New England for their size, Ray Frazier not just doesn't own the company, he's also an engineer. That's very rare. Not a lot of site companies have engineers that own them. That's a big plus and it's one of the reasons that I use them. And they don't do anything taking shortcuts, nothing. And I'm very proud to have them part of the team and, and to do it. And they're always coming up with ideas to make it better, even if it costs us more money. Also, I just wanna clarify, when I say that we don't have it in the budget to make changes and stuff, what I mean by that is, it's huge money to replace this culvert and open up the bridge and do it a hundred percent correctly. So if we're taking turns off of that, we're ready for some of that. I mean, some of the things that Mass DOT seems to be coming back with, it's already probably gonna cost us another thirty or fifty thousand dollars just on some of the things that we're seeing. That's on our shoulders, like, that's our responsibility. We have to do that. But if we're gonna change the whole permitting thing here, it's not only gonna cost money for re-engineering and new things like that, but as someone said, it's gonna take a lot of time. And that's when it's not, I don't think, fair to us. Because we're trying to do all the right things here. And we respect everything the neighbors that are saying. And any other questions that we can answer, we're here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is it something we haven't heard yet? Come on up.
But before, when I was here, I addressed that the bylaws in Newbury say Collector Street has to have be twenty-four feet. And you said it was grandfathered in. But if you change it from a dirt road to a paved road, then that is no longer true. And then Newbury will be liable for any accidents that happen on Larkin Road because they didn't stand by their bylaws. That's all.
Uh, thank you. James, do you have any answer to that?
No.
You don't, okay. Lisa, do you have any answer to that?
Well, I, I can tell you generally the definition of streets is laid out in the subdivision control law for brand-new streets. So that's, they define streets, collector's streets, industrial streets, and through streets. In the subdivision bylaw, when you're laying out a brand-new street, this is not a brand-new street.
Thank you.
I have one other question to comment, it's, it's not, it's new.
Come on up.
Come on up.
So we've heard a lot from public safety officials about the risks and the times associated. Someone earlier did ask the question about, life's all about balancing risks, right? We have fireplaces in our house, our kids sleep on the second story. They could fall out the window, right? Every night we go to bed, it's possible that our two and four-year-old could open the window and climb out and fall. Life's all about risks. You have to manage risks. But what I'm not hearing is, what we're hearing is, public safety officials say that bridge has to be opened in the event of the culvert, in the event that there is an emergency on the other side. But we've not heard addressed what are the concerns in terms of risk trade-offs around if that culvert is opened, the, the risk to the people that live on the street with the through traffic? So I, I'm not hea, all I'm hearing is, we think that having it open would be better for the people that could be on the other side that would need response in the event of a medical or life-threatening emergency. that would need response in the event of a medical or life-threatening emergency. Heard that loud and clear. Have we balanced or analyzed that against what we believe the increased risk would be to the residents and the people that live on this street around all this increased traffic, the fact that we know people are going to speed, all the delivery drivers? I'm not hearing that. And honestly, what all I'm hearing as a citizen is that you've made your minds up, that you're using the expertise of public officials to sort of support your narrative, and that you haven't really listened to anything we've said. I mean, does anyone disagree with me on that? That's what it feels like.
All right, thank you, sir.
Our mind-
Thank you.
One more, just Paul McKenna home on Parish Road, Georgetown resident. I want to pick up on the risk factors, okay? I hear you about life-threatening, heart attack, whatever. I would encourage the board, if you haven't, to get, to drive down either Larkin or Parish, park your car at the end, walk, and see how narrow, we're talking, I've measured it, 19 feet average width. We're not proposing sidewalks here, I'm sure, street lights, it's dark, blah, blah, blah. This man, he has the experience. He should be heard. You tell me it was a speedway when you were there years ago. With the pavement in there now, it's going to be a speedway again. It's an accident waiting to happen. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay. So I want to open up to the board. Do we have any comments right now? Jerry?
What will the yearly cost, once this road is open and the culvert is there, for the town of Newbury to maintain that?
James?
Do we know, Mr. Surratt?
I mean, initially, there's not much cost, because I know everything's new, but once, once there was a, if it went in, then the MassDOT would inspect it every two years. Anything over 10 feet and older, they actually do call a bridge, and they automatically, automatically do a biannual report. And then they let us know if they see anything starting to fail, or, you know, preventative maintenance, what it might need to-
So you don't, you don't have any idea?
Yeah, because at the beginning, it's, you know, like anything, when it's new, it's, it's, and it's concrete, you know, there's not much-
Can I ask a question? What, what do they, what's the normal for a new, a new culvert or bridge in town? What's the, like, what's the normal wear and tear, you think, in your experience, when you see it?
I mean, it should last 50, 50 years.
The whole thing should last 50 years?
Yeah, I mean, not paving won't, you know, I mean, and you may have to paint the railings and stuff like that, but yeah.
Okay.
The structure itself.
Structure should last about 50 years. All right, thank you. Yes?
And I guess this question should probably be addressed to Ms. Mead. What does the fact that, I believe you're the third contractor, developer?
I agree.
What was, what does all the, the change, I mean, you talk about, what did you call it? Articles of, what was that, term of life?
Conditions.
Conditions, yeah.
Orders of conditions.
Orders and conditions, conservation conditions.
Right. How, how does the fact that it was issued to prior developers, how does the new developer, how does that-
They step into their, sorry.
Effect. How, how does, is there, is, is there any effect on them? Because we're the three developers down now.
So they step into their shoes typically, in the order of conditions, it just carries on. They step, the developer steps into their shoes and they're required to abide by the plans unless they're modified. Same way with whatever OSRD plan. They step into the shoes of the developer. So I could, I could permit, you know, on this building, we could have gotten permit to, you know, extend it. Then we could sell it, and the guy who buys it from me gets to extend it according to the plans.
And just a ballpark figure, we're talking about cost, what, what is the purchase price of, of one of these houses going for, if you know?
When I started, it's only because I guess it all depends on when we're able to build them and how we finish.
They're not finished yet.
I mean, it could be $800,000.
Okay, wow, okay. Just, just, you know, this is, when, when you talk about cost and whatnot, I mean, it's, it's important. Thank you. Any other questions, Jerry?
And the, the width, I'm concerned with the width. I thought standard roads had to be 20 feet, and someone just said 19 and 16 feet.
So James, can you come up and speak to the width of the bridge or the culvert, the road going across?
It is 17 feet.
17 feet?
The road is 16, 19, it's kind of-
Yeah, that's, that's the culvert, it's 17 now, and that's what the new proposed culvert would be, except, you know, with MassDOT railings, compared to what was there before.
And, and now, isn't the standard road, doesn't it have to be 20 feet?
Yeah, ideally now, yes, we would-
Okay.
So, so this is, this is not going to be the ideal road?
Yeah, I mean, the rest of the road exactly isn't 20 feet deep.
And, and there's no place to pull off when two cars are passing? Is that correct?
Right there, there's some room, but there is spots on the road, it is.
You could drive down that road and see all the trees that are hit by the plows. To tell you how wide the road is, literally drive down the road, and you'll see, and even telephone poles have been taken out. It's a very narrow road.
So, so, James, James, I'm sorry, can you come up again? So the, the road is narrow. It's an old road. Do we have any idea how old Larkin Road is?
That I don't.
Okay. So are there other, other roads in the community that are small? I know Plum Island has small-
Yeah, I mean, even, you know, downfall roads now, there is other roads in town that are narrow.
In Byfield, too?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But not just narrow, it's wide. That's why I encourage you to drive.
Oh, we have all driven it.
Okay.
More than once. I, I know. More than once. Any other questions, Jerry?
None at this end.
Jeff?
No, I, I hear everything that everyone is saying, and I actually recognize Georgetown's last paragraph about wanting a limitation on vehicle size and weight. Large commercial vehicles should be restricted from access through the road. I think some of that's important.
Jay?
I won't beat around the bush. I support reopening the bridge, just like I did in 2016. The public safety issues are huge to me. Also, historically in town, traffic flow changes and shutting down roads has been very unpopular with the people outside of that particular neighborhood. And that's, again, just so I'm not beating around the bush, I don't want to set any false expectations. I see the same issues with it being closed that I do today.
Thank you. So this permitting issue aside, which we'll have to look into and make sure that that's not an issue, I think, I think we need to look at mitigation, because these are genuine concerns and they're real concerns about people flying down that road, kids running out in the street of that, that road. If there was a car recently that was going, flying down that road, as somebody spoke to tonight, maybe we should have some, Chief Lucy, do some traffic mitigation down there. And, and sit there and watch them and start doing enforcement. I don't know. There's a lot to think about. I have to think about this. What are, what are our next, our next steps, Lisa?
So I think, Madam Chair, and I think this is what the planner was going to speak to earlier. You have a list of things that you want, maybe engage Mayor McValley Planning Commission on. The traffic anticipated, if the road opens, they might be able to give you those numbers. What you can do to limit the vehicle sizes and weights, what actions the town needs to take in order to do that. Can it be limited to local traffic? They can, they can advise on that as well. And what you can do to reduce the speed limit in, in this particular area. So I think if the town engages Mayor McValley Planning Commission, they'll help advise the board on those regards. Also, you need to see the, you need to see the report and final, a report from the Army Corps of Engineers, the Department of Transportation, and then day size report and how the plans change and the responses that are as a result of that. And I think those are the, those are the to-dos from here. That I've listed, anyway.
Thank you.
I got a question. Why isn't a gate being considered here?
Right.
I don't get it. I don't get it. If it takes another minute and a half, it takes 20 seconds to undo a lock, so you save a minute.
So, excuse me, no, okay. Even, even if there was a gate there, the culvert would still need to be replaced.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, there's, I understand what you're, that's mitigation, and that's something that we're not there yet.
Okay, tonight, one data point on the, on a gate.
Oh, come on up.
And speed bumps. So Catherine, again, there's this guy Fred. He is in Groveland. He has door king breakaway gates. He also has a situation between North Reading and Wilmington on Route 125, where, a very similar situation where they needed emergency access. Their breakaway gate has a 14-foot arm, and it is, you can drive through if the keys don't work. So like, if the pass is down, any emergency vehicle can drive right through. The plastic arm just falls, and then the fire and police have a key to just snap it back together. No damage to the vehicles, no damage to the gate. It can last and last and last. I was like, that sounds really expensive, Fred. $15,000 for about three to five years. So we could pay for that with our tax dollars if we need to get there. But anyway, he's like, I'll come to your meeting, propose whatever we need to, happy to get creative. And it seems like a great proposition if we have to build a bridge.
Thank you. I, I will say that I'm a little disappointed that this order of conditions went through not once, but twice. There was an appeal process, and nobody in the neighborhood spoke against it, against this bridge. I had a project in my neighborhood, and I got an order of conditions, and I knew the abutters were all notified.
Susan Campbell, Larkin Road. When it was the first developers, I've been on Larkin Road for 19 years, we used to get things in the mail saying, because we were rebutters in letting people know about the meetings, that, that didn't happen.
Okay, so I have the conservation agent here. Can you come up with, do you have cut sheets or?
This, I looked at this earlier today, there are all- So there is a newspaper clipping that has the legal ad that was posted legally. It has to be posted for any public hearing anywhere. A legal ad always has to get posted. If it's coming to the Conservation Commission, it's been like that probably longer than I've even been alive, since that's been a law.
How many people read newspapers anymore?
So there's a legal ad from Wednesday, August 10th, 2016.
But that's when this project-
These are all certified return receipts. This is legally, again, for a notice of intent, which is what this was. In the order of conditions, it comes with a notice of intent that gets filed with the Conservation Commission. These are certified return receipts, and they're receipts from the certified mail if they don't get returned from the- Those go to the abutters.
Does the director of butters, this one, go for the letters?
These go to the director of butters.
Also, the 2015 minutes, no people opposed the bridge to vehicle traffic.
Can I see, can I see that, please?
So those are certified return receipts that get sent to, I believe it's within, director of butters within 100 feet of the location, according to the assessors' maps. And we get, I don't know where the certified assessors' list is. I don't know if it's in here or not.
That looks like there's only five certifications back, and there's more than five people on this road.
No, no, there was more than five.
And- Did you prove, that's the receipt, you see the little receipt on the front? Not everybody signs it. She had to show that you sent it.
And the legal ad also goes out, and all of the postings, the agenda postings and everything, they're all public. They always go up on the website. You can go and look at the Conservation webpage. I know I've been through it about five million times in the last couple of weeks. And you can go back years and look at-
You, you worked there. Thank you.
I think what this really is about is, as our representatives, do you want to hear from us and represent us?
Really, one more?
Because clearly, this is like, just put the ad in the paper.
So, so can I ask, is there, is there like somebody from 62 Larkin Road here?
They're dead, aren't they?
62, 64 Larkin Road, somebody from 64 Larkin Road here?
Oh, she left.
61 Larkin Road, is there 61 Larkin Road? Okay, 63 Larkin Road, 65 Larkin Road, 79 Larkin Road.
Those letters, I remember, those letters were particular to the development. Don't have an issue with the development.
Right.
No, these were, these were in order of conditions, no, let me, excuse me, these were in order of conditions to replace the culvert. That's what this was for.
I don't remember receiving and remember signing for it. It was particular to the development. I don't remember, I don't remember, recall, or heard of anything to do with the, with the culvert. It was all about-
Well, the town of Newbury had nothing to do with the development, so anything that the town of Newbury would have is pertaining to that culvert.
But I did get a registered letter involving the development.
Thank you. All right, so I, I don't want to belittle, I mean, go back, but this is, no, it doesn't, you're right, you're correct, it doesn't. But I'm just saying, to say that you were blindsided by this is, it's not accurate and it's not true. So-
And to say that we didn't object is not accurate. We objected, and we have the film of, of that.
Okay. Sam, you can take all of this in.
Can I comment on that?
Thank you. No, I, I, I'm, we're going to move on. Catch me later. Okay, so we have a lot of information that we still need to gather. I think we're quite a distance away from this, the, the underlying.
Well, you, you want the reports back, so.
Yeah, so I think, Martha, can I please ask that you engage with the Mayor McValley?
I've already spoken with their transportation manager there, so they, they know to stop this conversation.
Okay.
I'll explain the situation to them.
Okay. Now, nothing will happen with that road until the select board comes again to, for action, which is to sign something for the easements and the town council is working on. So this may take a while, so I just want you to all be aware that nothing's going to happen on that road again at all, probably until next year. So.
Aren't they talking about October? They want you to tow it down?
I don't think it's going to be October. Come on up.
It's a calendar year.
When MassDOT gets back to us, and when the US Army Corps gets back to us.
And they're providing the information that we need to provide to you. We're at the same bypass a month from now when we receive that, or right now. Because we all know that MassDOT can't stop the opening and the replacement of the, the opening of the bridge and the replacement of the culvert. And US Army Corps can't either. They can make suggestions and make changes, and we were to follow those changes. So I don't think it's fair to us to say that, oh, we're going to wait till 2022. I also don't think it's fair to the neighbors, like, no matter if it's going to be closed or open or whatever, to have to wait and have to continue coming to meetings and, and all that. We should all get some type of solution, whatever it may be. And I think that solution very much could be done in the next 30 to 60 days with proper due diligence of the board. I don't want to disrespect, disrespect the board. But I think a lot of that due diligence is the MassDOT and the US Army Corps. But other than that, no matter if we talk about it today or 60 days from now, it's the same conversation.
So we're still going to be waiting back for some comments from, from James. Our Highway Department Superintendent is going to be waiting some, from the comments back from you. So as attorney meet is lined out, we have some due diligence that we have to do, so.
I understand that. I just want you to know that, because I'm completely transparent, good, bad, or indifferent. If, if, if we're ready to go with Mass DOT and US Army Corps, we would expect to be able to move forward, whatever that may be, open, closed, whatever, however that's going to work out. We shouldn't be held up on something for months that it's the same conversation.
So.
But did Georgetown just say you're free? Like you're-
Let them build the houses if you force them to make the culvert or not. But Georgetown said it's up to you.
And I was just saying, like that, that, good, bad, or indifferent, it, it's the same conversation. There's no need to wait two months, six months for that conversation.
So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not comfortable moving forward with this until we get answers for traffic mitigation, until we get the report back from Mass DOT, until this, uh, our superintendent has our comments back from our peer review. So if you're looking for a green light for me tonight-
I'm not looking for any green. I think you're mis, excuse me. I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying.
Okay.
Obviously, we can't have a green light tonight.
Yes.
But for a statement to be made publicly that, you know, we're probably talking 2022,
oh, I-
no disrespect to the chair.
I'm sorry.
But, but I, I just think that's-
Okay. I misspoke. I am sorry.
We have to get Mass DOT, we have to get US Army Corps. But when we have that, and then now the, the traffic situation, when we have those, that's, that's the facts.
Okay. I'm sorry. You're right. I'm sorry.
Alicia, you-
Yeah.
Point of order, Alicia, if I could. Um, the order of conditions for his development on Georgetown-
Jack, excuse me. What does that have to do with parliamentary procedure?
Thank you.
Right, but point of order isn't used to interrupt a meeting. What's wrong with the procedure of the meeting that you're seeing?
Uh, because what we're addressing is, about to address is a statement that I think it relates to the permitting that hasn't been done. So on a point of order is the permit that he's speaking of, the Army Corps of Engineers who hasn't weighed in, the DOT who hasn't weighed in, we're putting the cart ahead of the horse by making any decisions because if the Army Corps of Engineers, Jim will attest, if they make a requirement that it's a million-dollar bridge and they want an arch over it, I don't think Mr. Collington is going to say I'm going to go through with it.
Okay, so you're putting the cart before the horse right now. We're not, we're not at that point.
I know. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome.
Can I just point out that I asked permission to speak and was told no.
It's, it's indicative of the level, level of class you have.
Yes. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Oh, what's that?
That means he has the class to follow parliamentary procedure. It's a compliment.
So, next steps.
Just before we go ahead to, Mary MacValley Planning will do a real thorough job. They have done a thorough job before for us on, like, when we were involved in the one-way road at the library road and things. And, and, and Mary MacValley Planning is a state agency. They'll pull no punches. They'll probably open our eyes to a lot of different things, too. We've worked with them before. So Martha, they can, they'll get a chance to speak to some of the residents, too, right, when they do their study?
Well, I'll talk to Tony to see what their, their process would be.
Yeah, so I mean, they're pretty thorough.
So there's clearly more stuff that has to happen.
There's, like Alicia said before Jack got up, she, she's not ready to do anything. So.
So that's it until you get those final reports and you get the information from Martha and I get, um, documents drafted and over to Georgetown.
Okay. So here I intend to say something. Come on up and say it.
No, I'm not.
Really quick. One or nine, if everybody wants to go home.
Okay, I just wanted to say, some of us didn't live here in 2016 and I'm sorry I didn't tie in the plover with what I said before. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
But some of us didn't live here then, so.
Yep, I understand.
Now, I'm trying to just have a quick question.
Yes.
Through the chair of Town Council, the easements, um, we consider a separate subject than the replacement of the culvert and opening of the bridge. Cause if by chance the culvert's not going to be replaced and the bridge is not going to be open, we'd still need the same easements. So I just want to say that publicly and get the board's response to that because I don't think we'd need to slow down that process while we're waiting for the other, the stuff. I know it can't be handled tonight, but when the, when the documents are, you know, approvable, approved.
I'll be, I'll be working parallel with all these other things happening because we have to get them over to Georgetown.
Right, but if those were done in the next couple of weeks or whatever, and our attorney's involved with you, we wouldn't be waiting to move on the easements until we're hearing from Mass DOT or US Army Corps or the traffic situation. Cause there'd be no need for that.
Well, that'll be up to the chair and the board.
So that's my question. Does everyone, my, my question is, would the board agree that it's two separate subjects?
I agree.
That doesn't affect the, the neighbors' concerns? Cause either way, the easements would be needed.
I agree.
So that's something that we could-
I understand. Does the board understand that?
You understand, Jaya, right?
Rehash it for me.
So let's pretend that the, we don't open the bridge and we don't replace the culvert.
Mm-hmm.
And-
Still need an easement.
We, we still need an easement-
The utilities easement.
For the utilities.
Okay.
Even though they might be coming across, but they'd be similar area, the easement on the road would be the same. Um, so I'm just asking for, I, I, I don't want to see that process stop when we're waiting for Mass DOT or US Army Corps or traffic. Cause it's two separate animals.
I understand.
Is it all just one permit, though? I mean, how do you get to pick and choose what you do now and will?
It's not one permit.
It's a process of many checks and balances and boards, committees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you, Madam.
Developer, one question quickly.
You can go out there and ask them. So, um, the next item on the agenda is I'm going to pass over the Town Administrator's report correspondence. I read from the, um, the letter we got from Georgetown.
Thank you very much.
Georgetown. Um, we have draft meeting minutes to approve from September 14th. Let me let them exit.
What did you answer this for? Do you have any motion to sound your own?
Yeah, but I didn't get it. No, approval.
All right, what do you got?
Okay, so I have approve of meeting minutes, draft meeting minutes from September 14th. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Julie, I found one typo, um, under, on the third line, uh, one, two, three, the fourth line down on the one, two. Okay, so page, one, two, three, four, five. On the sixth page into the minutes.
Okay.
The fourth line, it says, Chief Lucy responded. We have-
Leave it open. It's a public meeting.
Yeah. The Chief Lucy responded. We have just reconvened, so do not have any answer right. You put not, the answer is no.
Okay.
No, that's all. Yeah. And that's it. Thank you. Um-
Warrants.
Any, all in favor with that, with that edit?
Aye.
Yeah, aye. Okay. And motion to approve warrants?
No, no, motion. Did that approve the minutes? Would that change?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good enough.
So motion to approve warrants?
Motion to approve warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
No, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Question. I, I just have a couple of questions. Um, talking about agenda and things like that, uh, when, uh, is the board going to be dealing with the council of aging, um, citing for their new location? I know Mr. De Mail presented a number of months ago the, uh, some plans, so-
June 15.
June 15?
Yeah.
Of this, of 2022?
Yeah.
We're going to discuss it?
No, that's when he presented it.
Oh, okay. So when are we, when are we going to?
That's my hope we can have it on our next agenda.
Okay. Uh, okay. And is the architect, is he still doing plans or?
Nothing's been done with an architect.
Okay.
But that needs a vote of the board.
Okay. Um, all right. So the, all right.
An architect for what? Let me, sorry, I'm sorry, Jerry.
Plans, I mean, we have the one plan that was, that was given, correct? That's a combination of the-
The Select Board hasn't received any plans. So the plan that was, the, the combined facility that you're talking about, that was done-
The great council on aging and town hall.
That was done for the council on aging, correct. But that hasn't been submitted to the Select Board.
Okay. Um, and also, uh, when, uh, are we going to deal with the Plum Island Escape Route 14th Street?
So that-
We've heard a lot about public safety. We're in the hurricane season. Um, it's been years since this has been on the boards.
Yeah, so that's, um, I think we're, wait, Lisa, do you have any comment on that? Do you know when that's?
Yeah, I do. I had a meeting through you, Madam Chair, um, a meeting with the, the fire chief, the police chief and, um, some other, oh, the engineers and the surveyors who were meeting with, um, Mr.-
Hibbert.
Hibbert, um, to walk around the sta, so the town put stakes out very clearly where all of the corners were over there. And then he wanted somebody to come out and walk him through with the plan to go over where all those corners were and understand, like 12th Street and all of that. So that's the last I know of it, is that, uh, the police chief and the surveyor, I believe, were going out. Can you go come out there?
And, and has, has he and the other neighbors, have they definitively been given an answer whether or not that divot is in fact a, a wetland or it's just a divot?
This, this isn't on the agenda?
It, it is. Well, it should have been. A month ago, we voted to put it on and the, and the town administrator removed it from the agenda.
No, no, the town administrator didn't remove it.
You did.
I didn't put it on the agenda.
You withdrew it from the agenda when we had voted to put it on.
All that aside, when it's on the agenda, we can have an informed discussion of-
Well, we should have had an informed discussion a month ago-
But Jerry, we're not ready, but we're not ready to move on it.
It's not there yet.
Until we're ready to move on it. What, if, if I was to put any item, just any item on an agenda and we can't move on it, to what point? Why would I put it on an agenda until we can do something about it? Just to sit here and talk?
No, we could get, we could give the information that the residents and the abutters need. And that was the purpose of putting it on the agenda with someone from the Concom.
Okay, so that project is before the Concom? The Concom has, they should be coming to the public meetings and public hearings at the Concom and get those questions answered. The Select Board-
They're not getting them answered there, so.
Well, the Select Board cannot answer for the Conservation Commission.
No, no, it can't, but it can certainly, as representatives of the residents, get them some information. And that's what I was trying to do. I was not trying, Madam T A, to influence any other board.
No, no, that's not, that, that came, no. You misunderstand, Jerry.
No, I didn't.
I apologize. No, I apologize.
Your email said, said you contacted Mr. Costa from Town Council and he said it was unwise for the board of selectmen to try to influence any other board.
No, he said it would appear as if the Select Board-
Oh, the appearance. Oh, okay.
-was influencing another board.
And I wanted information for the residents and they have been clamoring for years for information and they haven't gotten it.
So as a Select Board member, I think that it, you can work with the Town Administrator and get information and go talk to your constituents if she can give them to him. Tracy, would you be-
I'm happy to. And the, the constituents can also work directly through the Conservation Agent if there's any specific detailed information relative to their hearings. She'd be happy to work with them as well.
So I think that this is a process issue and I don't think people understand how each of our boards and committees work. And as the chair of this board, of the Select Board, I will not have anything on the agenda that we cannot move on.
Well, it's also sequence.
I mean, we had a discussion tonight because we needed, we needed to. This is a bigger project.
Yes, and you've got a lot of people involved and they're, they're showing up.
Right.
So we're paying attention to them.
Correct.
And these other people aren't getting their due and I'm trying to assist them.
Well, then if you want to assist them, you need to work with the Town Administrator and, and get a list of their questions and she would, Tracy, would you be happy to answer?
Be happy to.
You need to work with the Town Administrator.
And I think, Jerry, it was sequence. It was sequence. It's, it's before-
John, can you leave it open?
Yes, it, it, it's a public meeting.
Yeah.
That Mr. Ricky was just slapped on the wrist for trying to close the doors before. That's, that's very good. We can tell why the other chiefs.
I disappoint myself as hot as anybody else.
What were you saying, Jeff?
I just, it was part of sequence. It came, it came to enlighten us that they were heading into the process and it was just taking it out of sequence, so.
Yeah, it's got to go through its, the Select Board voted on it, moved it to the Conservation Commission. It's before the Conservation Commission. It's going to be in a public hearing. Anything that they want to say about the wetlands and all that other stuff needs to be heard at the Conservation Commission.
And I was perfectly, I was one of the people that voted for that. I voted with you and Mike. And when I heard the reason why it wasn't really appropriate from Town Council, I was in perfect agreement that it made sense. So.
So, so if you-
The reason was not to influence another board. It was to get information.
Well, that wasn't your intent. I believe that. I believe that wasn't your intent.
That's okay. We just, we got to be, you know, as long as we're all careful.
Yeah.
I think we're, I think we're smart enough to, to follow the-
Well, you got to be careful. We can't have something before, come before our board, A, that we can't move on and B, that we don't have jur, jurisdiction over. And it's before another one of our boards and committees. It's just not, not appropriate.
Well, also what's not appropriate is-
What else do we have?
Is suggesting, you know, nefarious motives on this board's part.
Well, I don't think that would suggest-
No, I think it was the more that it didn't want to be perceived that way. But anyway, what else do we have?
Motion to adjourn.
You need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.